Go with.
Okay, I'm calling the regular meeting of council order seven P M for November twenty ninth, twenty twenty one. Like to acknowledge that we are treaty five land, the traditional land of the creation, creation and the whole land of meeting people. Call the meeting. The. Or the mayor. For me, just to offer the record, I want to serve this on record, especially so request for a regular meeting in council. Signed by councillor McMurdo, councillor Prue and councillor Wong and myself with regards to. Water distribution and billing. Thank you. I got for information and action. Thank you. City manager.
Yeah, under your approval of the agenda, we need to remove item six point two. Need a motion to amend the agenda.
Councillor Ellsworth.
It's a move.
Second by councillor Paul. Cool. All is a better. Not all of them opposed. Deputy Mayor, I may make a quick comment with regards to the agenda. Can I get clarification with respect to the item that was tabled from last meeting with regards to the. Lease agreement with the province of Manitoba was my understanding that we were set to deal with that this. This meeting of council, if not, when we tabled all items, they do need to be dated. So I may have misunderstood or misheard.
Do you have that date, Tony?
The date was December thirteenth that was going to come back with council.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the.
Thank you. It's an extensive file, so we're not going to be working on it.
Okay. Okay. So the agenda has amended now. Councillor Valentino and councillor Paul. All is there. That's everything. All of the both. Thank you. Anything for community comments and feedback.
Ron Madetrick, twenty fifth street, got a couple of things. First of all. Have we received any numbers on the census yet? As to how many people in Thompson.
No, none of the census numbers have been released yet.
Okay, secondly, on the nineteenth of November, I read in the morning. On the city of Thompson's website, a list of streets would be graded. One of the. Streets on that list were Weare Road where I have business. In the afternoon, I read it again, and one of the streets on the. List again, it was Knife Crescent where I also have a building. It's eleven days later and I've not seen it greater yet. And I guess what I'm asking is, can we just get the communication people to add a hello well after this, so we know where you guys are coming from?
Is there anybody else? By the adoption of the minutes. Just the. It's a five point one. Resolution twenty twenty one, one sixty five, it resolved that the minutes of the public hearing for variation order number nine 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 two one. Held at council chambers, city hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Monday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty one, we adopted that certain. And which were moved by. Andre and seconded by. All is big. From the next resolution is resolution twenty twenty one, one sixty six. It resolved the demands of regular media council health, council chambers, city hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Monday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty one, we adopted that certainly. Did move by councillor Valentino and councillor Prue. And the resolution six. The resolution to accept the investigation of reports for the code of conduct. Between councillor Long and councillor or deputy mayor one more. Very good.
Yes.
The resolution, uh, resolution twenty twenty one, one sixty seven. Where is the council code of conduct for council members applies to all council members and establishes the standards and values that council members are expected to meet. And carrying out their responsibilities as elected officials of the municipality. And whereas section three point one of code of conduct for members of council by law, by law states that. Also has the duty to consider the well being and the best interests of the municipality as a whole. All members must conduct themselves in such a way as to promote public trust and public confidence in the council and its power. And whereas. On the council long and council meeting that occurred on the May tenth, twenty twenty one. Did not reflect the standards and values of the council. And whereas investigators hired to investigate the council code of conduct allegations against council. And whereas the investigator finds respondents' actions of disclosing the complaints. Personal medical information requesting medical confirmation that the complaint. Has was fit to participate in making decisions at the meeting in a public forum reflected negatively on the municipality and could have impacted the complainant's. Ability to perform his duties effectively. And whereas the investigator found that they identified the actions of the respondent hotline in an allegation. Did contribute the city of Thompson code of conduct for members of council by law, number one nine nine seven. Dash twenty twenty, section three point one, six point two and seven point six. And whereas the investigator finds that the respondent's actions of disclosing the complainant's personal medical information and requesting medical confirmation of the plan. Was fit for to participate. In making decisions at the meeting in a public forum reflected negatively on the municipality and could have impacted the complainant's ability to perform his duties effectively. And whereas the. Investigator finds that this was a single incident and that council long. Had already taken steps to remedy the contravention by apologizing to councillor Lomler. The investigator does not deem it appropriate to provide recommended sanction. Now therefore. Now therefore, we resolve that councils accept the investigator. Report. For the council conduct between councillor Long and councillor Wong.
Over.
Yeah. Deputy Mayor, I'm a little uncomfortable. That. That you are looking after this matter, and I know you're the deputy mayor. I'm just a little uncomfortable. It's between you. And councillor Wong, and I'm not sure if that's appropriate. I'm not sure. I'm not saying I don't know at this point. But to me, it's almost like there's a conflict and someone else should be ammled it rather than putting you in that position. That's just.
Yeah, just for clarification, as in the past, that any member of council, even the ones involved, are able to partake in the discussion, the debate, but they are not to partake in the vote. So the deputy mayor would be within the rights of reading this resolution.
Also all. Thank you. Deputy Mayor. First, I'd like to. Ask for the permission for me to ask the question to councillor Ellsworth. Yeah. Thank you. Councillor Ellsworth, back in May tenth, two thousand twenty one, at that meeting. You were the one who started the conversation provided by, at that time, was councillor Lammer about the medical condition. And you were the one who started the questioning about that. Medical problem, and I just shared the same concern. Here, my question is, did you get the request by councillor Lammer to ask you email or text or phone call publicly to apologize to him?
Yes, I did.
So did you publicly apologize to him?
What happened was, I could freely, I contacted councillor Lommer at time. And him and I had a conversation I, for approximately twenty minutes. And he heard what was going on, and I certainly apologized to him in person. If I was out of order, and I asked the question very clearly, did he expect that I would give a public apology? And the answer was no.
Okay, now I follow up first. Well, no, my supposed to be carrying the chair now.
If you would like to step away from the chair, you could appoint someone, correct, to take the place of the chair?
Yes, council by resolution without the point of the chair.
So you'd rather have another chair or the deputy mayor would like to step down, the council amongst yourselves would elect someone to take the chair and enter.
Just for myself, I'm fine with, um, let this moving on, I. Believe that. In the public's eye that I would like that we resolve these kind of issues in as a council that we're moving forward. But I understand and respect if you would rather step away.
One, we want one, one part of the discussion here, like, uh. Why is it discussed? There you talk about this.
You could nominate someone to be the chair at the moment, and if the others accept that, then they would take your place. Which is more on.
Move her in a second, yeah.
As councillor Volante was being the past deputy mayor, sit for the chair for a moment.
Sheriff, it's the little council.
Little favor. Yeah, for a second, I'll move. Councillor Cooper. All is a better.
Who's next, councillor McMurdo?
Yeah, thanks, councillor Al, you know, just a very kind of brief comment to, to say that not that these investigations are frivolous because. I mean, there's been some issues with the council. The way we discourse, but by necessity, they're funded by the public, and I think that moving forward, the, we need to, as we've all thought amongst ourselves. Just treat each other with more, more respect and more courtesy in our, in our discussions and even in disagreements and, and hopefully avoid any more of these moving forward to the chair.
Thank you, councillor Wong.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My other question is direct to councillor or deputy mayor. Since the reports show that I did make initiative to apologize to you. Why are you still launching the investigation to against me? And why am I just be singled out instead of both of us?
I'm just gonna ask the deputy mayor if he wants to answer the question, if he, he would rather not.
I'll, I'll answer. The reason why. An email I sent as. I was following the procedure. Was given an email and. I asked for a discussion. By a certain date. Councillor Ellsworth contacted me ahead of time, and we had our discussion. And then the date came and went, and by a certain date, you have to submit these code of conduct. Take over. And I submitted it, and then you contacted me the following day. So. They're already gone. I talked whether or not I was gonna try and pull it back, and I decided to continue. I didn't feel that your. Apology over the form we discussed was the. In the series. I didn't think that you. Saw any fault in what you disclosed. So I continue.
Thank you, councillor Paul.
Thank you, councillor Valentino. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to this one. This is, uh, we have discussed this a few times now with other, other situations in mind. And it's quite clear to me, having sat on this council for the past three years, that there's an opportunity, or there was. At times for the minority to be stepped on by the majority in council. Whether that's the truth or not is, is beyond the point, that sometimes a perception is as important as the, the reality. What I like about the code of conduct that's been passed by the, the province is that it takes an element of this away from the city. There's still an element of the city's decision making pro power in that process. But this is a really good example of why the city should not, like, city council should not have any involvement whatsoever in determining, A. The outcome of an investigation or B, what the sanctioning punishment is. And if I may comment, just having to read that resolution is probably a good punishment for almost anything, but. What I've done today to, and having discussed this with the rest of council, I haven't done this unilaterally, but council met. In a, in a in camera meeting to discuss issues of conduct. And it was my impression that there was somewhat agreement that we would look at a bit of it, some changes. Changes to the bylaw are absolutely necessary on an annual basis. Under the, I believe it's under the provincial regulations, what I've asked and what I've passed on to the administration to circulate to my fellow council members. Is a proposal to take the decision making process and the sanctioning process directly out of the hands of councils. So that you don't have these factions fighting each other within council. I've spent my time here for three years, getting land based in for this, that, and the other, incurring legal fees, significant legal fees to protect myself. Where I felt like I needed it, but I believe in this process, kudos to the province for doing this, and it's gonna require changes. And I hope council will consider these changes that I proposed and work towards bettering the bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Paul. Any other comments from council on this before we vote councillor Wong?
I'd like to. Say one more thing about this. Just know what the deputy mayor said, that I did not take a step, but it wasn't the report say. And it wasn't the timeframe at all. I think somehow the story you kind of misinterpreted. I did make the step based on what the reports say. And what I find troubling is I've been singled out. I don't think you are the type of person that discrimination against minority, but somehow your actions speak louder. What you did to me, to me should be fair. I was just the one who shared the concern, but you didn't go after the other guy. I think somehow you just showed your character and your personality against the minority in this.
Councillor Wong, I'm gonna caution you to speak to the resolution and not to the character of other councillors. Councillor Ellsworth, you're the mover. Do you have any final comments before we vote? Thank you, I will. All the current direction from administration due the two parties in.
For the vote. The parties that abstain.
Okay, all right, so in terms of the resolution number two zero two one, one six seven, all those in favor? And those opposed? And abstained? Will be councillor Wong and councillor Lammer. It's Carrie, thank you. Deputy Mayor Lammer will take the turn.
Okay, six point two.
I'm not a hundred percent sure who moved in second, then I'm not sure if that was part was right out, so if I could just find out, then we were in a second here.
Sorry, was councillor Ellsworth was the newer?
And I don't know if it was councillor Paul.
And councillor.
Okay, six point two. The resolution approved, approved sole sourcing with Jarvis HVAC versus player. Rooftop heating units at the Thompson Regional Community Center. Right. Resolution twenty twenty one, one six nine, be resolved that council approved the sole sourcing with Jarvis HVAC. For the supply of rooftop heating units at the Thompson Regional Therapy Center at cost. Not to exceed twenty six thousand, six hundred and seventy six dollars and point two cents for additional tax.
The manager. Sure, the Thompson Regional Community Senator has six rooftop units that provide heat to zoned areas within the TRCC. Two of those units which service the recreation areas, specifically the Mary Fensky boardroom and the weight rooms have failed, leaving those areas without heat. The city service technicians have attempted to do the repairs, but they found that the units had to actually be fully replaced because they're unable to affect the repairs necessary. These units are about twelve years old. Because winter's upon us, this is a bit of an emergency that we have to get these units up and running, so that those areas of the building are remaining safe. And can be used by users in the coming weeks. So there's a procurement here for a sole source replacement of light units along with the rental of a crane to lift them up. And the labor to do the installation and commissioning of the units.
Yeah, I think clarifications, however, from administration, when administration says light units. They don't mean the same brand, I hope.
I don't have the details on the exact brands that are being used. It was, well, our technician said, this is the unit that's there, this is what can be put in this place, and however they figured that out, I wouldn't have.
All of my name, uh, the mayor. So I know from the wording that we looked at as a council. It was, the memo had indicated that these are twelve years old, and I got the sense from the way it was worded. Was that that meant that they were old and it was expected that they would fail. Twelve years. For a HVAC system to fail seems like a ridiculously short period of time. And I would hope that we're not replacing with the exact same brand now that we know that it's. That's the lifespan.
I'm not sure, I wouldn't know based on the brand, it wouldn't be the same unit because the units there would be obsolete. But it could be the same brand, it could not be a lot, I'm not sure of that. It's whatever our service technician identified is compatible, and that can be put into place quickly. Councillor McMurdo.
Yeah, thanks, Deputy Mayor. I kind of share the same concern as councillor Paul, that twelve years does seem to be. Not, you know, the, maybe the, the ideal lifespan of, of this equipment of that nature, but I will note for public that. The director of development technical services has noted in his memo that he will be putting up the M program into place to, to monitor their performance. And, and hopefully we maximize the longevity and their lifespan in the future with the more comprehensive asset management, so thank you.
Of a lot. Thank you, everybody. I just wonder how heavy is this unit per unit? How heavy is that roughly?
I don't have that information. Heavy enough that it required a crane.
Some might think it's overrated, in my opinion, because seventy five tons of crane, I think it's a bit. Too big for the smaller, the compressor, I believe, it's called the top unit compressor, right? Anyway, those kind of room that, those kind of place that we can save money, we could. You can use a different type of the, uh, which is like a Zoom boom, where we can do the job way better than. That's my opinion, yeah, thank you.
Councillor Cooper.
Yeah, in my opinion with boom, there is, uh, where the units are located, so it's extended more. So you don't have as much lift. With Mary Fensky and the weight room, it's kind of in the center of the building. So you gotta go in from out here. I think that's the reason why we need the extra lift. Is because where the units are situated, and I think there are about thirty five hundred pounds. Give or take a few, because I've checked into myself in the past. So I think it's a. The piece of equipment that is needed. And I'll support this resolution. Thank you.
And there.
Just before you call the question, I'll need to know who moved in second of it.
I apologize, sorry, it's moved by a bridge or councillor McMurdo and seconded by councillor Prue. And call for the question. All those in favor? Everybody knows. Yes. I apologize, the mayor has passed her regrets. I'm thinking about the state of the beginning of the meeting, I apologize. It's on. For the merger report, I guess I can have that for me, but the, anybody else, councillor Ellsworth?
I just want to thank the council and the taxpayers for the opportunity to go to the A and M last week. And certainly I took the opportunity to speak at the, the convention. Certainly in regards to the police policing costs at twenty three point seven percent, that's, that's going to be against Minnesota across Canada. It was about, I believe it was twenty two resolutions altogether, majority, I think, is probably down south, very few for up there. And you get to, to realize real quick that most of the people down south forget that there's a north affair. It was a very civilized convention in the most part. And the only thing I would say that I, I believe there should be more involvement from councils, because when you got issues as big as we have in the north, you need more advice than that. Again, I was very thankful of the opportunity to do well.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just a couple of things, thank you to the community and the volunteers that put on the sack parade. I was the Houston holder of our mascot, and I know Public Works had a couple of pieces of equipment in it also. And also that December eleventh is another Christmas lights parade, but it's in the evening. And that the Winter Wonderland will be opening on December tenth, and you can get tickets at city hall. And to follow up to the A and M convention that councillor Ellsworth, mayor's superintendent and city manager. McGinnis, I was also there, and the city of Thompson did put forth the resolution at the resolution debate. Mayor Smith presented the RCMP unionization cost, and it was supported, I think, ninety six percent. For lobbying to the federal government to help municipalities with that increase in costs. There was a lot of collaboration, I think that we can all agree, that we were able to actually have discussions on the side with lots of municipalities and reeves mayors and councillors. There was motivational speakers, there is a spring twenty twenty two convention plan, and there was also the trade show, and I know councillor Ellsworth that said we had picked up pamphlets and stuff in that also. So overall, as the A and M Northern District rep, we're very happy with the turnout, and I know maybe some of you were on Zoom, we had a lot of people on Zoom also. So it was the start of hoping to have conventions moving forward, so thank you to city of Thompson for sending and being representative there. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to make a point, I attended the. The parade with my family, but. I really wish, and I don't blame anyone for this, this is the council. I really believe that we as mayor and council should be at front and left and center of these things to, to, when they're put on, and I saw, I, I think maybe we didn't plan it, we should have. So I think council needs to look at December eleventh one. And if nothing else, we had a big, we had the trailer, I believe, or the truck from the Public Works was there. An empty truck with nothing on it, the flat, that, that we could have easily set up something. That we could all have been sitting there proud of, of our city, and that, that truck should be probably leading, showing the leadership of the community. And so I would ask that we collectively, in the future, start looking at what can we do to join others. I mean, I have a lot of respect for people put together or something like that. But we as a city need to be there in the front, certainly showing our leadership. Thank you.